Seven o'clock, so we'll go ahead and get started. First item is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next item is public comment. Do we have any?
Nothing.
Not having any, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Any questions for staff on that?
Moving to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item, appointments. Appointment to the, sorry, I lost it. Gary County Emergency Telephone Services Board. Alan?
Mayor and Commissioners, of course, you know, this has been a hot item. They were trying to reorganize. We have, the city attorney has received a, because the agreement, I argue, we are, it was passed in late ninety-nine, nineteen ninety-nine. Totally out of date, not to proper statutes. We've, the city attorney has gotten a draft copy that the city staff will review and he'll get back with the county. Also, there's a board involved. I understand back when, the board, and I'm not sure what purpose the board serves nowadays. Back then, it probably served a purpose, but they want to continue, so I think it's just an effort to show, to show, get along for spirit. I suggest we appoint two people now and, and see what happens when we rewrite the agreement as long as, as well as the bylaws. And I would suggest the two chiefs at this time. At one time, Commissioner Brown told me this morning that it was all civilians. You know, that fund has now changed. There were some law changes in the mid-two thousand four and then up into the two thousand.
Twelve percent.
And, yeah, there's changed, a lot of changes in there. The money can always spend certain ways. My concern always is that we're the party responsible, but you were in hold the funds. And I just, I don't like in that situation. That's where, how we got there. But I was just, this time we appoint the two chiefs and, and see where this goes. And we'll bring the agreement to you after we go through it in the county and then, because it'll have to be approved by, by this group.
Can I comment?
Yeah, absolutely.
Having been associated with this board since nineteen ninety-nine, just to give you a little bit of idea how it works. When I first became associated with it, and this money is allocated on taxes, on phones, and it comes back to the county and this agreement was drawn up in ninety-nine. The individuals on it were primarily civilian, civilians. And over a period of time, I'm not sure when exactly, but it started to revert to being the heads of the departments, like the fire department, police department, sheriff department, Granby Plaza Police Department, mayor of, mayor of Milford. There's seven of them on the board. Three from Gary County, two from Junction City, one from Milford, and one from Granby Plaza. And how this usually worked, just to kind of give you guys an idea how it worked, if there was a project that met the criteria for that money, the department heads, such as myself, when I was the chief of police, or the sheriff, or the Granby Plaza chief, or the county fire chief, would come and make a presentation, usually with slides or, or whatever the case may mean, presentation to the board members, and then the board members would be approver to disapprove it for the purpose. And there were a number of times that things got turned down with use of money. There were times that, that there was more questions where we had to come back. So it was kind of a, a hit and miss thing with the board, but I, I thought it served a good purpose. I would point out that Gary County does pay half of the PSAP fees. Am I correct, Alan? For the dispatch center?
They pay half of the dispatch.
They pay half, and.
Hang on, not the PSAP fees.
Okay.
They pay half of us to do dispatching.
Which is the PSAP. Correct?
Yeah, but, yeah, the PSAP is the point of.
Which is the dispatch center.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, but it's, it's.
So they do pay half of.
It's in the city's name, though.
I get that.
In the city building.
But Gary does, Gary County does pay.
Right.
Half the fees. And the budget now, correct me if I'm wrong, is over one point two million dollars?
It's in that range, yeah.
In that range?
Yeah, I can check.
So that means that Gary County and Junction City split that evenly to somewhere six hundred thousand plus each year, each. Plus, Granby Plaza pays somewhere in the ballpark of between forty-five and fifty thousand dollars a year towards the dispatch center also?
I think that's right.
Milford does not pay any that I'm aware of. The Granby Plaza does pay a portion every year towards the dispatch center. The county pays half, so I think we need to keep that in mind before we think about doing away with this board in any way, shape, or form. And I think it served a valuable purpose. And it, it, it has, there's a method, the only thing I want to comment about, and I have, I'll preface these comments by saying by the chief, fire chief, and police chief, have all the respect and world for these gentlemen, but if they're on the board and they're the come ones and they're, they're coming in and presenting for a multi-hundred thousand dollar project, and they have a vote, I understand that, but I always thought that it was good that we had civilians, kind of a civilian oversight. Because there's anywhere usually between three hundred thousand to five hundred thousand dollars in that account. And I, and from what I'm hearing from Alan, there's coming in at fifty thousand a month now?
About twenty-five.
Oh, I'm sorry, twenty-five thousand a month?
Yeah, a little bit over twenty.
Just since last March.
Fifty a year. You know, there's still some money in it. One of my problems, of course, in the county fund, it's in a fund that if you go through their budget, you don't know what it is. Because they put it under Senate bill, whatever, it's not even identified, which, that's no issue. But then there's two hundred thousand sending another fund that just sits there, it's been sitting there forever, way it looks like.
That's because those are, those are from, under the old.
Yeah.
Rules.
Right.
And there are different rules.
Right.
For the usage of that money. And because those rules are more lenient than the new rules, they kept that money.
Okay.
To the side.
Okay.
To be able to use it for things that maybe the new ones won't allow you to do.
Okay.
That wa, that's the purpose of that.
But they have, but they have no money budget, they have no expense, they, in their budget, there's no ex, they don't have any expenses budget each year, so they can't spend the money.
That, I don't know. I'm only telling you what.
I get it, okay.
What the, the balances are probably, I know we've taken over, what, two, just since March last year.
Yeah.
Over two hundred thousand dollars. Am I correct?
Right, around there, yeah.
So we need, we need to keep in mind, and you know, I'm not advocating anything, I'm just stating a fact about this board and the important part that it plays in our emergency services in this county. And it gives a, a equal share, if you'll be, to those other members of the, of the county that have a, have a.
Interest.
Interest, very good. Interest in our community. So again, I, nothing against the gentleman, I just think that maybe we should be, maybe getting back to, to civilian oversight.
Okay, and we'll be moving to that. I think that's the next step we do here, rewrite the agreement.
My main goal is making sure we take the agreement, get it in compliance with the two thousand twenty law where it is. And then, my part, and I'll work with my counterpart in the county as best I can, of making sure things come into compliance in the way everybody's working together on the same sheet of music for that, in, in the county and the city's best interest there for all the citizens.
So you're saying that we, so if we appoint these two gentlemen to the board, we, those, that board would meet, get everything into compliance, and then maybe move to the, to make them, move that to, move them off, move a civilian? Is that what you're saying? I want to make sure I'm just understanding.
Well, right now, because I, from my understanding, and I'm not sure when the last time we actually, the city has, has appointed people or not, but we're making sure.
Maybe not for years.
We're making sure to make the appointments, that way they're proper, under the current bylaws. And then, they're going to get together, they're going to meet, get the communication going, they'll look at the bylaws, and then the, the city, the county, the other governing bodies involved, they're going to look at the overall memorandum, and understand the interlocal agreements, to get those that allow the board to exist and function, to, to go from there. So we're kind of having these two moving parts that are going together.
And what the board can do, and I have concern about meeting acts issues and just a lot of things, but that's why we need to clear it all up. But what they want to do is get this, at least the board, to start looking at the bylaws. But honestly, the bylaws are still going to have to be approved by the city commission and the three, the four governing bodies, as well as the agreement. So, I mean, it's just a way maybe to get us, the dialogue started.
And this appointment is for this year, so.
Yeah, and like with any appointment, if, if something changes, we change the nature of the board by the agreement, they go away anyhow, the commission will make changes in the appointments.
Any other questions for Alan?
I had moved to appoint fire chief Terry Johnson and police chief John Lamb as a city, as a Junction City, appointments to the Gary County Emergency Telephone Services Board to two thousand twenty.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item, special presentation, an update on Fifth Street Playground Park. Kendall, you're up.
Can we start with the video?
Yeah.
Kendall Shoenrock with Quality Play for All. I'm joined with Angie Greenwood. We're going to give you guys a sneak preview of a video that was put together by our team and Landscape Structures to show off the amazing things we're doing in Junction City. It's about two minutes long, and this is the first launch.
I retired from being an employee of the school district, and when I did that, I realized how worn out the playground looked after here. It's a Fifth Street park, so it's not very safe. And I said to my best friend, Angie, wouldn't it be lovely if we could plan a new playground?
Well, I think one of the most important things was we wanted to create something that would be new, attention-getting, and something really we could be proud of for this community and this community that's around here. So we took a trip to Kansas City and to Missouri, and we went to a playground. And we happened to go there on the day when school was out, which was just fabulous. And we saw children play all over, and some of the equipment that really struck a note with us was this kind of landscape structure. And we saw the children play, we saw what they liked, what they, what really got the crowd going. As you can see, most days, and especially since we opened the park, we'll have a hundred kids here sometimes. We're almost packing parking.
I like doing everything, but my favorite thing to do is make money.
I'm an athlete trainer, I'm a heart exerciser.
My favorite thing is playing at my bar, and I like to smile, and like there, and so fun.
If you come and you can see a little tiny block. There's a ladder and stuff, there's a.
The ladders are cool because they make people up more faster.
Holy cow. You gotta look at this. We're all about ten feet tall, and that's a lot of good stuff.
Do you get an endorsement fee now?
Right, so I think it speaks volumes that Landscape Structures would want to highlight Junction City, and it's really just a testament to the support of, of this group, the city, and Quality Play for All in general. From a legal perspective, I think you'll appreciate all of those models are under license, so we have everything under, that, that is fully capable of being broadcast and distributed without any issues. I wanted to take a minute and give everyone an update on some of the upgrades that have taken place, and then kind of what's in the production line. And I've tag teamed this with Ed Lazzier at the Parks Department, so I have some visual aids here. Angie, if you could help me. So we've updated our five-year plan. The green items are what we did in phase one, and I think everyone's been there, I think I've seen basically all of you at the park at some point to check this out. So what is next? If you recall, a few months back, we came and discussed the basketball court, which has been finalized, it's in, we're going to stripe that. The total budget that we talked about there was thirty-five to forty thousand, plus or minus, with Quality Play for All picking up half. I think our total out of pocket will be about twenty-one or twenty-two thousand, and the city is going to pick up the delta. What, what's going to happen next and what we're pushing for is the walking trail that connects the parking to be upgraded on this side as well, and then a sidewalk to connect to Eisenhower Street. And there's obviously a lot of upgrades to the walking trail on Eisenhower Street that, that is going to connect everything. We are in discussion with the Manhattan Area Technical College right now to do a bridge that would cover the limestone irrigation channel, or the water channel that's there, which would then give us an ADA compliant bridge to span that gap and connect the zip line to our, our big primary structure area. What's interesting about that is Cal Valley Engineering is working on the specifications. M A T C will donate the labor. Quality Play for All will purchase the raw materials. It would then be the city, we would ask the city to install that bridge and work with Cal Valley to verify that that would be in accordance with what they've engineered. So it's a real nice win-win-win. M A T C's excited and on board. It's a nice way for us to care, keep our price down on a bridge. It's a real-world project. So as you can see, all the things in purple are what we're working on, and we should hopefully see that here through the summer. We've put the roundabout, obviously, in a different color, because that's in a holding pattern until we figure out the next steps on, on that side. And then we also have some future expansion that we'll approach at a later date. So that's kind of our overarching plan. Any questions that I can address, or?
I brought a couple of things. The play stuff to the south that.
Icare?
Icare group has.
Yes.
And it's, they want to put up some shade structures.
I think Ed, is Ed here?
Yeah.
Do you want to speak about that?
Yeah.
That's, that's not our group, so I don't.
Right, I know, but it.
Speak at a turn.
Sure, yeah, the Icare group that put up the multi-generational equipment for the folks that like to, you know, have something to do while they watch their kids play on the equipment, are looking at different ideas for sun shades. We've looked at a couple of different models, wouldn't say rejected, we really don't have what we like yet. They have a certain amount of money that they would want to contribute to it, along with the city kind of matching that. And we just received some other stuff. Kendall and I talked with the group, and we kind of even thought about, is there other shades we want to do at the same time in here? But really, what we came up with was is, the Icare group, I think, original plan was to try to do it all at once, but with the budget we have and they have, I think we're going to try to go back and use actually the same manufacturer, Landscape Structures, and use the same type of oning that's over.
By the swings?
Over by the swings. Everything would match that way. And we may have to, because of the price, because of the quality of this stuff, it's really the best, we may have to phase that in over a couple of years, instead of the original goal of trying to do it all at one time.
They wanted to do a carport, and that got mixed real quickly.
The idea is to kind of.
We're too much quality to.
Yeah.
You know.
And I even looked at some other options, other manufacturers besides Landscape Structures, and they were nice, but then really, as we kind of went through it, we decided, and so I'm, I'm going back to that group now.
Mayor, the mayor and I talked a little before the meeting about, you know, doing their community development block grant, and he mentioned maybe some other parks, but I, I don't know, I'd have to check. The stage, I don't know if that could be a grant project or not.
Well, so we, we do have a fifty thousand dollar donation.
That's a great match.
From the Wolf family.
Yeah, that'd be a great match to start with.
Which is, which is a jump, jumping off spot on, on that performance pavilion at the edge of the walking trail. You know, I don't know the total budget on what it would be to do something pretty significant there, but I think we've got one shot to do this right, and so I really want to slow down. That's why for us, that's always been one of the later stages. I'd like to really build out some of the other lower hanging fruit, but.
What's the, what's the big blue to the north?
This would be parking, potential parking expansion that Cal Valley drew. You have a, a second pavilion that we're working on. This slab is poured. This would connect to a potential third pavilion. We have a sand volleyball court that doesn't necessarily need to go there, but it, that, that would be one of the lower expense items. Basically, you're talking a couple of posts and, and some nets. It's just really how you box that in and, and keep it so that the sand stays where it's supposed to and doesn't interact. And then we're aggressively pursuing some other grant opportunities for children's equipment for two- to five-year-olds. So if you really look at this, we've got a lot of tile structures, we've got the T-post swing, but outside of that, if I could be hypercritical on this, it would be we're lacking two- to five-year-old or a specific area that is safe for the smaller kids to play. And so I could potentially see us doing something that's maybe over here, and a, a second bridge, depending on where we come at with M A T C. But that's a later discussion, and I want to be respectful of your time.
I thought I was over there Sunday, and I think that for its first year of use, everything is in remarkably good shape.
Yeah. That speaks to the.
It really does. I mean, there was remarkably good shape. I didn't see anything that really looked damaged. All the green simulated gra, the turf is all in place, none of it's coming up.
Right.
And the basketball court was full.
So the basketball, the, one of the reasons that's important is because of pulling the teenagers away from the, the kids, right? And so you kind of want that, so one of the projects that we're working on is to stripe that basketball court, and that's going to be on Quality Play for All's dime.
In April.
And, and one of the things that I think that we're going to work on is a center logo of, on, on that basketball court, and potentially bringing some, some two or three options to the public for approval, you know, maybe a J.C., maybe a basketball, maybe a J.C. in a basketball, depending on whether or not the, the team can do that. And then, you know, putting a, a nice big, let's vote on which option we'd like, and put a big donate button there for people to voice their, their opinions and hopefully open their wallets and their hearts and help support such a good cause.
It's been great, and there's always kids there.
Isn't it awesome, seeing it packed?
Love seeing that all the time, so.
Wonderful.
Buy, buy, and there's always somebody at the park, so it's a great job.
Our, our group also did the low to moderate income study, and after the census, I think we're looking for some clarity to pick that back up.
We need, if we want to apply for a grant from now on out, because they fell back to the two thousand fifteen estimate, which is forty-one percent again.
Right.
So if we want to apply for a grant this year, we need to do a survey.
Mm-hmm.
And that's why, you know, just thinking of life, we want to do something this year, could we find a project, this park or another park? I mean, you know, could we do a, the stage parking lot together? And, and I don't know how they rate from local need, but we can always make the argument that their grant got us into this trouble, because now we have a full park and we have other needs there. I mean, and that's success, I mean, that's not a.
Right now, what's been ordered is we've got a bleacher seating that's going to be put on the one side of the basketball court, and then along with that, some bi, a bike rack. And again, these are going to kind of blend in with having an activity that can actually occur at that basketball court, whether you do a free throw shooting sometime contest thing, or whether you get kids with bikes and then have them practice and do things around in this area. So it's all coming together quite well, in spite of the fact that we just went through, and we are in winter, but Ed and, and everybody got out there and was able to get the concrete in.
Did a great job.
Yep, and did a really good job, so we really want to thank everybody for supporting us and having us move forward.
Any other questions for us?
Yeah, more, plans for more benches for seating around this area for older people watching their grandkids?
Yeah, great, great question. Ed and I spoke on, on that point specifically. So once that new pavilion's in, we'll have a nice shaded area, and we'll have some additional seating. And then I think Dawn's bench is around, there's some other options that we can bring back and, and try to put in there. When we piggyback off of having the, the concrete trucks there to do the other walking trail upgrades, that would be an appropriate time to pick up those additional benches.
Right.
So that was in the, kind of in the weeds. We're also looking for some grant opportunities for water stations and things like that, but, you know, I wanted to.
I noticed you had the water park in a, in a green color. What's, what's, what is that? What are you forecasting?
Well, we'd like to get into it before.
Ed's the guy, I'll defer, I'll defer to the expert over here.
Yeah.
This kind of started trying to open up the water park just to the general public. It's taken us a couple of years, over the last two years, to get the proper way to manage it and chlorinate it, and get the right equipment in place where it can be, you just walk up and push a button. And last year was the first year we actually operated it where it could be open to the public. Through the budget process last year, we went through getting prices to get the fencing removed and new fences built, and so that's on the, that's on the queue for yet this year. So it took a while to get it, it could be public.
Very nice.
Lots of good upgrades coming.
Yep.
Great.
Good idea.
Thanks for all your hard work.
Thank you, absolutely.
Our pleasure.
Appreciate it, guys.
Thank you very much for having us tonight.
Thanks for your support. Thanks, Ed.
Next item is a presentation by Safet Saratoma, Flint Hills Regional Leadership Program Project Presentation. That's a lot of Ps.
You want me to?
Yeah, you can run that.
Yeah, you can run it.
Go for it.
Okay, there we go.
Mayor and Commissioners, as you know, I'm Lindsay Miller, and.
I'm Janice Nickel.
We both had the pleasure of being part of the Flint Hills Regional Leadership Program this year, and as part of their program, the class tries to make an impact in the community with our project. And we were fortunate enough that our project here in Junction City was chosen as the group project, so we thought we'd just go through our project with you and kind of give you goals that we have and just kind of give you an idea what's going on. Why did we choose a park? Why should we care? Basically, according to the recent National Parks Recreation Association survey, sixty-four percent of millennials and sixty-six percent of parents show strong support for their park. So basically, as I'm sure you all know, parks play an important part of our community. Next, problems that we identified at Saratoma. There are safety concerns there, as we'll go on and show pictures of, but some of the safety concerns are the bleachers, and then, of course, the restrooms. As, as you guys know more than anyone else, we have had some funding limitations, so the park has not received some of the TLC that it needs provided for the park. The park is in a great location, and in fact, use of the park has gone up quite a bit, so there is enough shown need for this. And then, due to this park not being at the level that individuals would like it to be, other parks have seen a strain because of not being good. Our goals for this, or solution, would be to repair the fence or the backstop. Currently, as we'll show later on in the, with some pictures, it's not in good condition, and in fact, safety for that is a concern. Another item will be to replace the tables and add a score table. Again, that'll be safety, and then, of course, comfort for the individuals at the field. And then lastly, we want to improve the restroom, because as you will see, they were in, in need of that as well. Here's a picture of the current backstop that's in place. We've been doing some pricing, and basically, we're probably won't do a complete replace, but we'll definitely do a repair. Next, for the bleachers, the pictures aren't in full detail, but bottoms are kind of rotten out. I personally wouldn't want to sit on them out of my own safety. And so our goal is, is we've been doing pricing on that well, is to bring in two new sets of bleachers and then a score table that will be there so they could help keep score for the game or practices. Next will be to improve the restrooms. The restrooms really need a good overhaul. They are not current, they do not currently meet ADA requirements. The windows are broken out and plywooded over, so it's kind of dark and gloomy in there, so they could definitely use an improvement. So as far as our timeline, we're currently having meetings, planning what we're, what, what our goals are, and then trying to gather funding for our project. And then our date of the project is April twenty-fifth, so it's the day for volunteers to show up and help, anyone that would like to. And then we did go ahead, because this is Kansas, schedule a backup weather date, and that will be May second.
So we know that Junction City replaced that outback, the outfield, their fencing there in two thousand and eighteen, and as a result, you've seen about a nine hundred percent increase in the use of that over one year's time. So going from about five to fifty-two there in two thousand and nineteen. So just that one thing alone really increased the usage of that ball field. It's currently used by your Little League and Gary County Softball Association. About, approximately, we figured that two hundred children use it annually, and so the increased community involvement has really kind of eliminated some of the vandalism, and I think maybe some other things have been done, so that, that has been a concern in the past, and, you know, we feel like now that's been addressed, and, you know, with these upgrades, why we can sure do, we felt like we could do some things there that would really benefit your community. Our Flint Hills Regional Leadership Program had some objectives, and it was to involve sweat equity, to involve children, and to benefit our community. And so this project really fit nicely, and our class moved it up and voted on these projects as they went through the system. So this one's the one that came out on top. What we propose to do as the Flint Hills Regional Leadership Group, there's about thirty of us that are in that program, our proposal is to prep and paint all the existing structure and, and do the sweat equity part of, you know, getting the backdrop replaced and assembling the bleachers and the minor restroom, you know, repair, revamping, painting, and those kinds of things. Our hope is to involve the community and get these children's youth organizations, these, there's a lot of ball teams that have already expressed some interest in helping us as, on our workday, you know, do their due diligence. us as, on our workday, um, you know, do their due diligence to invest back in their community and, you know, get those children involved at an early age to understand what it is to, means, you know, to give back to your community. And, uh, that's the, the location is fairly central there. Uh, you know, it's got easy access from my seventy and Grandview Plaza. And then, um, so our mission statement was to improve the aesthetics of this local ball field at this park there, but also to develop a sustainable, well-maintained and self-safe outdoor space, evolving and meeting the needs of your community and the individuals and the families that, that are here. Um, we hope that it'll inspire and challenge the youth to become leaders, uh, down the road and to give back to their community and also to promote park participation and instill a renewed sense of pride in their community in that area there. So to kind of wrap up, um, you know, we're really happy to, uh, work with the, the city and, right?
Yes, yes.
And, uh, the group because we really, uh, would like to welcome the community back to Saratoma Park. And I did a little bit of talking with, uh, Jeannie Anderson, who I think was the maybe last chair of that Saratoma group, and she gave me a little bit of history about how the park had gotten started and everything. Um, so I thought that was really quite interesting and, you know, that, uh, Saratoma actually stands for service to mankind, so this really fit really well with our, our team and our groups, uh, you know, what we wanted to do. So, uh, just to recap, April twenty-fifth is our workday. Um, we'd love to have volunteers to help us revitalize the park. We've got some other events that we're thinking of, uh, you know, trying to raise more funds so we can have a bigger impact. And one of the things that we are considering is selling signs to line the ball field for local businesses or anyone who wants to purchase a sign that would help us raise funds that we could put back into more renovations for this ball field. So we'd love for you to help us get the word out, um, maybe help us on the day and come volunteer if you can and that's it. Any questions that you might have?
For the projects that you have listed, what is the price? What's it going to cost to do those things?
Right now, we have a funding commitment of sixty-five hundred dollars, but, um, well, one, our class has...
Has a...
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Oh, our class is going to contribute towards the project as well and I believe it's at least a thousand dollars, right? Is that what our goal is?
I think it's fifteen hundred.
Is it fifteen hundred?
Yeah, I think it's fifteen hundred that our class has to. But we're also in, in trying to incentivize some of our classmates and former graduating classes to get on board with our fundraising efforts. So that's one of the areas that we're kind of trying to nudge people a little bit, you know? We just figured if our class alone, you know, contributed thirty dollars apiece times thirty people, you know, that's a fairly significant. We had a challenge to donate some food to the, uh, Flint Hills Bread Basket and, you know, we raised, well, brought over a thousand pounds worth of food in there and the challenge was what, five hundred? And so our class is pretty active and steps up, but, uh, you know, we're looking for ways to, you know, get more funds, you know, that we can put back into this. We just have to figure out how to raise those kinds of funds because we know your budget is limited too.
But I think this is a wonderful project. Our, our parks need help. And here's something to get you started, and I want to donate two hundred and fifty dollars to this project and I challenge my fellow commissioners to do the same.
Wow.
We each make a little money for, for our little city commission job, so I always encourage my fellow commissioners to donate back to the community.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
We did put some city funds to help this on the project. Lindsay, Lindsay did a great job and brought a project to our community and we've been putting dollars in in the parks, so we committed to five thousand dollars just to get started.
I'd like these guys out the hook.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next item is the update on the twenty-nineteen NPDS MS four permit. Ray, a lot of letters and numbers.
This is a requirement, that's what you're going to list today.
These are some of the requirements I have to do for K D H E. My presentation has been quite as exciting as the rest of them, just to give you this kind of reading to help you build. But I'm sure that's a, I'm happy to meet for K D H E. Thank you.
Thank you.
Like I said, this is one of the requirements from K D H E. The purpose of, uh, the MS four permit is to allow us for stormwater to go into the two, uh, main tributaries, the Republican and Smokey Hill, and, uh, every year we are required to do this and upgrade our, our permit. There we go. All right, just a little background on the city information. There's, the stormwater master plan was developed in, uh, twenty fifteen by AMAC and it's good till twenty nineteen. I believe for twenty twenty, we might have to update our master plan again. Uh, right now, we have fifty-one millennial miles of urban stormwater system and then we've got fifty local open chan- open channel systems, six, uh, sixty millennial miles of that. There's seventeen hundred inlets that are within the city. On the map that I've given you, you can see where we have, uh, it'll show the open channel outfalls, the river outfalls that we have, the Republican and Smokey. On the river outfalls, on the Republican side, there's nineteen of them and on the Smokey Hill side, there's seven. And on the open channel outfalls, there's a hundred and seventy-five on the Republican side and Smokey Hill, there's a hundred and fifty-six, uh, open channels that drain into those two tributaries. Uh, on the back page, you can see where the basins, there's eight basins that the city's divided into, that, uh, four of them, uh, five of them go into the Republican and, uh, four, uh, hang on here, five go into the Republican and three go into the Smokey Hill. Under the, uh, NPDS, uh, phase two permit, there's six requirements we have to meet as the minimal control measures, uh, education and outreach, public, um, involvement, illegal discharge, detection and elimination, construction of BMP, best management practices, post-construction best managed practices and, uh, pollution prevention and good housekeeping. Uh, our permit requires us to have a management plan, which we do have, and then we have a monitoring plan. On the monitoring plan, we have, uh, three stations we have to take care of. First station is up here at the seventy-seven bridge. That's where we take the, the water that comes in so we know what exactly is coming down the river. Second one was right there and by Prices Ravine. What that does is capture everything what the city puts into the system. And then down there at the, uh, Grand Avenue location, that's where we take it and, and monitor what we've got from the, from the good side to what the city puts in and what good discharges back down the riverside. Uh, there's six tests for each one of those and it's eight hundred dollars when I get done with a test. Per test, I have to take four per year and I can only take when I get at least a half inch of rain. Uh, K D H E did an audit back in twenty sixteen. Uh, they came in, told us that we needed to work on our public involvement and participation, our legal discharge detection elimination, construction site stormwater and runoff control and our post-construction management and new development. They were, uh, pleased with what we did for public education and outreach and, uh, pollution control, good housekeeping for municipal operations. As I said, the report is due, it was due February twenty-eighth and it's been sent in for them, uh, included all the activities that we do as our best management practices, which includes street sweeping, those type of things, uh, checking out on the job sites to make sure that they do the controls as far as the stormwater protection, which is self-fencing or wattles, whatever controls we need to do that way. What our money pays for, for the stormwater is seven dollars on a residential, uh, varies on, uh, industrial. But as you can see, this one was on South Garfield. This is where one of the pipes, stormwater pipes came, uh, loose on a concrete side, so we had to go in there, repair that storm drain there. This is in, in front of the high school, that came apart. Uh, we ended up putting brand-new inlet and had put new piping in there to make that , uh, work force. As you can see there, uh, that's not a cheap fix, that inlet and those pipe there cost in, in the neighborhood of five thousand dollars, just put that in there.
How long have those been in there by chance? Do you have any idea?
Uh, some of that's been in there for...
Thirty, fifty years old?
Yeah, at least that. And I'll show you a picture here. Uh, this one happens to be at Sixth and Country Club Lane there, at that intersection. That went across and you can see right there, that being old, uh, galvanized pipe and you can see how that's rusted out, um, due to salt and all those other debris. We ended up having to take that out and replacing that and putting in brand-new HTB pipe. Now, other issues we got to deal with is this person here put a fence all the way around the drainage channel and when he did that, we had swirling back up there and it washed it and almost lost that, uh, power pole for K, uh, for West Star or Enver G now. So we had to repair that, uh, had to write a violation letter to that person, letting him know that next time we had to do that, we're going to charge him for that, the cost to repair that and he had to take that fence down. So he was working on getting that done. Other issues that we got to take care of is, uh, these are our common issues that we have, got to work with building codes. What happens there, there's no kind of protection for self-fence or any type of, uh, measures to keep this from going out in the street and what happens is then it goes into our storm drain system, plugs our storm drain system. Need some kind of either self-fence or wattles or erosion, um, erosion mat to make, contain all that dirt so you won't have that coming in there. But we'll work with, uh, building codes, make sure that when they pull these, like Enver G or Kansas Gas does something in the alleyway or a plumber does this repair and fix, that they take care of this type of situation. That's one of the, one of the, the new items that we're going to look at at this part is putting out post-construction and work on doing those type of things. And do you have any questions?
Sounds like we better fix our alleys too, the drainage in the street all the time, dirt and rock and everything.
And I'll have to do some stuff there, so we talked, we discussed...
Somebody's been mentioning that for several years.
We discussed maybe what we could do.
Don't anywhere.
We'll see what we could do, trying to do some, uh, work as far as doing that.
Problem is I can't take that, I can't justify taking that out of stormwater. I gotta take it out of the drain.
It's in the drain.
That'd be a reach.
Looks like it's an open channel stormwater network right here, that some of those are...
That's what you think, I must check if I can fly that one.
So those four that they said that we needed to address or work on, is that what some of this is or is there any repercussions for receiving recommendations on those four or...
No, as long as we, we show them, when we, uh, show them the permit, we, we fill out that form and do everything, we, we make our recommendations, tell them what we're going to do and then as we do that every year, we show them what kind of improvements that we do that way.
There is no shortage of stormwater projects in our town.
No, there is not.
The big one we're going to have is, is Helen Park.
Yep.
Helen Pond, and that's going to be, that's, she's going to bid this spring, but that's probably going to be a half a million dollars.
Homers.
Sorry.
Which pond are we talking about?
Homers, I'm sorry.
You got a project going I didn't know about or...
No. I got my H just mixed up. All right.
Any other questions for Ray?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ray. All right, on to new business. Consideration to award the twenty-twenty sanitary sewer cleaning to Ace Pipe Cleaning in the amount of three hundred and ninety-five thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Mr. Mayor Commissioners, on April twenty-sixth of twenty seventeen, the commission approved the award of the sanitary cleaning to Ace Pipe Cleaning of Kansas City, Missouri. The work consisted of televising, cleaning and inventorying the four segments of the city's sanitary sewer mains, which are in the southeast, south, uh, southeast, northeast, southwest and northwest. Uh, currently, we are requesting approval for the fourth phase of the sewer cleaning, which should be in the northwest section of town and that's for three hundred and ninety-five thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. That would in, involve various cleaning of lines from six inch to twenty-four inch for a total of a hundred and seventy, a hundred and seventy-three thousand millennial feet of sewer line. Uh, the money's been budgeted in the twenty-twenty budget for doing this. Um, we recommend to city commission that we award the twenty-twenty sanitary cleaning to Ace Pipe Cleaning for three hundred and ninety-five thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
It's our last year then, right?
That's correct.
And now that clean, we have video of every sewer line town.
Correct.
And, and the future down the road is to start planning probably lining projects or their replacements.
Right, we're going to, we'll, we'll sit down, look at it and get the recommendations of what we need to do for the, the areas that are bad and then try to figure out a best way to, uh, fix that, whether it be line it, pipe burst it or remove it, just dig it up and remove it and replace it.
Can you assess all that in-house or is that through Call Valley or do we have to have another vendor to assess it for us or what?
Well, since Ace has all the videos, I mean, they've given us the videos as well and they've reviewed it as well. We talked to them about going ahead and giving suggestions on what we might do with that. Uh, they thought they could do that at no additional cost as we go through this process.
Any other questions?
I think it's helped out a lot in our town. I mean, you don't get, there are those service calls that you used to get.
Correct.
The lines are always getting plugged up and, and everything else, so it's been a valuable service for our town. Money well spent.
And there's more than adequate funds in wastewater, so, and like, so it's budget as well.
Any other questions for Ray?
Make a motion to approve the award for the twenty-twenty sanitary sewer cleaning to Ace Pipe Cleaning Incorporated, Kansas City, Missouri in the amount not to exceed three hundred and ninety-five thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars as presented.
Got it. We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Commissioners.
Thank you.
Next item, consideration of the grant of easement for controlled access highway right of way for the K-18 roundabout project.
Mayor Commissioners, as you know, we have received that grant from KDOT for the roundabout at, uh, K-18. And in that process, we are having to grant an easement control access for right of way along the K-18 roundabout since, uh, KDOT wants us to move the roundabout to the west a little bit. Uh, but what that would do is give us professional easement for controlled access to the highway right of way, removal of borrow material if we need it or for highway purposes over and upon the following track of that real estate. That piece of property is owned by Richard Munson and he's given permission for the thirty-four thousand, seven hundred and thirteen square foot of easement and for the consideration of ten thousand dollars for the permanent easement rights for this piece of property. Funding is available within the street budget or special highway funds. We, uh, staff recommends approval of the grant of easement for the purpose of the controlled access right of way for ten thousand dollars and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
And the owner now is going to move the fence, right?
Correct, he's moving the fence on his own.
That's a pretty fair agreement.
Yeah, we believe it is because we think moving the fence itself is probably going to cost anywhere in the neighborhood of three thousand, four thousand dollars. And it's almost an acre of land that we are receiving.
I'd move to approve the grant for easement as described.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Commissioners.
Next item, consideration of the drug and alcohol testing agreement and policy. Ms. Pula, is that right? Yeah, making sure.
Oops.
You don't come in front of us as often as some of these other guys.
Right. Uh, good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Lorena Pula. Um, I'm here to request approval of the updated drug and alcohol testing agreement and policy that has been submitted by Compliance One, which is Junction City's third-party administrator for the city's current drug and alcohol testing program. Um, at the beginning of this year, the Department of Transportation pushed out new reporting regulations for all commercial driver license holding employees that fall under any of the different administration overseas. So given these new regulations, um, I feel it's imperative Junction City continues to stay current with trends and remain compliant with the constant changes. So this required the continuous reviewing of the policies in place and revamping them to fit with the recommended and/or regulated practices. recommended and/or regulated practices being pushed out by federal, state, or local laws. So as a representative and to mitigate any legal ramifications that may be associated with our failure to comply, Human Resources had requested our third-party administrator, Compliance One, to reconstruct our outdated policy. So our staff has already reviewed the updated policy and has verified it to meet the necessary requirements for compliance. There is no budget impact outside of what we have been currently paying Compliance One for our drug and alcohol testing program. However, I felt the budget impact of being out of compliance was worth noting. Each penalty relating to violations of the new DOT requirement starts at around over $3,000 per violation and increases from there. So our recommendation, the staff recommends a motion to approve this project as presented.
Does this include the policy testing of all new employees as well?
Yes, it does.
That'll be an added cost there. Right now, the only employees we test are public safety and DOTs, CDL ones. We've talked, and, and I feel it's important, from a safety of everybody, you know, so every lifeguard at the pool will have to be tested ahead of time. And I think that offers another level of safety for our community, as well as Spin City Golf Course. A little bit harsh when you start it, but a number says do that as well.
I'm sorry, I forgot to say I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Is there one time, one for your testing?
Employees, okay, employees are, so when new plug is hard, they're going to get tested. After that, it's just random only, and random will only be on the DOTs and the public safeties.
Yes.
CDL, public safety. Now, we are going to probably do some training where if we see probable cause, and if we see there's probable cause, we can say, you have to go get tested. And one thing we found out, we're probably out of date on our probable cause training to make sure that the supervisor knows when they can do probable cause.
It came with accidents too, like, did it have an accident?
Our accidents is-
Yeah.
Have to go get the test done.
Yep. Our policy also has like a, a matrix that kind of provides a guideline as to what requires testing.
Any other questions for Lorena or Ellen?
I'd move that we approve the project as presented.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, ma'am. Item D, the consideration to award the replacement of the HVAC systems for the police department bid to Superior Plumbing in the amount of $349,842. Chief Lamb.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. The police department seeks approval to replace the aging heating, ventilation, and air conditioning system within the building located at 210 East Ninth Street. In August of 2019, we requested and received approval for design of this project. Current system in the building is at least 31 years old and is starting to fail. During the summer of 2019, we had several large issues that were costly to repair. During the winter, it's sometimes very hard to control the temperature within a building, sometimes making it colder, and hard to control the temperature within the building sometimes, excuse me, should be. The police department is 100% temperature-controlled building to security requirements, so we cannot open windows to allow airflow in summer months when the system makes the building too hot. On November 21st, 2019, the Junction City Police Department released a request for bid for a new HVAC system. We had a brief pre-bid meeting on the 6th of December, 2019, and six companies showed up. On December 30th, 2019, we had a bid opening, which three companies bid on the project. Following companies were Superior Plumbing Heating, Thermal Comfort Air, Glassman Corp. As you can see, after a thorough review of the bids, we identified there was a large gap between Superior Plumbing and Thermal Comfort Air. Was due to Superior not outsourcing work or obtaining subcontractors. Designers of the project, Demon Deam Architecture and PKMR Engineering feel that Superior Plumbing has met the requirements of design and can complete the job as designed. This project will be funded completely with asset forfeiture funds and will have no pick, impact on the city budget. Our staff recommends that a bid be awarded to Superior Plumbing in an amount of $349,842.
Did you have your architect here?
Yes, if you have any questions regarding that.
Is this the same group that's doing the, it's a different one yet?
Different.
Gotcha.
Questions, concerns?
You stated, Brett, that you don't have any concerns with the bid being $100,000 less?
This is Jeff McKinley, PKMR, and I'm Brett, Demon Deam Architects. We had met with them, Superior, on several different occasions. One, you know, as he read off the bids and the cost differences of the bids coming in. So, you know, naturally, you're going to have some flags raised. So we addressed those. We went through the scope of the service several different times with them, Jeff, myself, and, you know, asking all the questions to where they came back, and as he stated with what they're doing in-house. And he has assured us, you know, far as walking through the project, we had a mandatory walkthrough on the pre-bid, which he was there, and he's been in there a couple times, and he's asked questions. Just, he's done his due diligence to give us no reason to think that he, he does not have all the bases covered on this project. So-
And we don't do change orders.
Yeah, that, that is one thing we, we popped up too. We don't want to get it sitting there nickel-dime to death.
Right.
So, yeah, that was our-
We did, we did talk about having a contingency in there because there was a lot of unknowns that you can't really see, but decided not to do that because that's why we brought the people in there so they could walk the site and see it all. And then one, one of my concerns was what system he used, and he used a system that I put on the plan. So all the equipment that we spec is what's going on.
And the references are fine, they're established and-
Yeah. There was a lot of intricacies on this system and going through the building. Where do we got to go through far as some of the chipboard ceilings, the walls, and up and over beams and, you know, in and around. And we walked through all that and addressed it, made sure that everybody was aware of those circumstances coming in. One thing on, you know, some preestimates that we were doing, just mechanical alone, was in the $300,000 range for where it was. And that wasn't including any, at that time, architectural work to come in and finish it. So, you know, the price was within where we were estimating it. The other ones were high, and I can't really give you a reason for that.
I'm actually shocked that system lasted as long as it did.
Right.
That was in that building when we moved in, in 1989, '90. So I can't believe it lasted as long as it did.
Especially when the date on the furnace is older than the building.
Gee, man.
So do we get a 31-year warranty with this?
You'd have to talk to him about that.
Any other questions for anybody?
No.
I'd make the motion that we award replacement of the HVAC system for the police department bid to Superior Plumbing in an amount of $349,842.
Got it.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, guys.
Thanks.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Next item, consideration of the memorandum of understanding between the Junction City Fire Department and Camso Manufacturing. Chief?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, Camso Manufacturing here in Junction City, Kansas, specializes in tract systems for agriculture use. And these processes of their system, they have confined spaces and vessels that occasionally they're required to go into and do maintenance with. And they've reached out to us at the Junction City Fire Department because we have a confined space rescue team. And what they have offered is a donation of $4,000 annually to help us maintain our skills and our equipment. And when they have a need, they give us a call, we stand by. So we would be their emergency boot. In confined space situations, you have to have a team on the outside that their only purpose is rescue. What this will allow us, it's a win-win situation. Our people get more experience in confined space, but also, we also have some funding coming back to the city so that we can afford to continue the training, improving the skills, and maintaining the equipment.
Guess my question is, chief, what's the, this confined space and vessels, what's that mean?
In confined spaces, anything where you, that you have to enter that is smaller than a normal door. They have a vessel that they use for, I have no idea what they use it for, it's some top-secret thing they have, but they have ports that are 28 to 36 inches that they take the bolts off of, and they have to go in there and fix. In that confined space, there's a lack of oxygen, lack of, or you could hurt yourself, twist your ankle. You have to have a rescue team to go in and bring you out. They have a, they have a large tower, and it has access doors, and if they have to go in and do maintenance. And it's, that's part of the, we do that for, for the water department. We also do it for the rail department if they call us. So Camso has reached out because it is actually, it's beneficial to us. We get to maintain our skills and keep our equipment in top shape. They get a rescue team and don't have to spend the money to buy the initial equipment, train the people when they're already there.
You just go stand by when they're, when they go in there, you're there onsite as they're going?
Correct, sir. And if something goes on, we're on scene, and that reduces the amount of time and improves the survivability of the person that's hurt or asphyxiated or whatever the issue may be. And it gives our people the opportunity to set up as they would in any event. So it gives us practice. And with the task force, that's one of the things that we do, we're specialized in confined space and technical rescue through our Kansas task force. So it gives our people the opportunity to use the skills that they've been training on. So it, it's a win-win situation.
Is this something that they are going to have you out there daily, weekly, monthly?
Three to four times a year for program maintenance, and if something breaks. But these vessels are pressurized, so if something breaks, I'm pretty sure we'll know about it way before then. These are steam vessels and pressurized vessels, so if they go, their alarm system's going to go off, and we're going to respond anyway.
They use steam out there a lot?
In most manufacturing of rubber treads, you do. Again, I, they have a machine or a vessel out there, and it's proprietary. So we're not really sure what it does, but we know that they need confined space when they go in, so.
All right. Any other questions?
Move to approve the memorandum of understanding between Junction City Fire Department and Camso Manufacturing.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item, consideration of the request to apply for the 2019 Assistance to Firefighters Grant.
Mayor, Commissioners, at again, is that time, the federal FEMA Assistance to Firefighter Grant is now open. And what the Junction City Fire Department is requesting is to apply for two things in that grant. One is a station fire apparatus bay exhaust system. Currently, our two stations do not have a way to evacuate the diesel soot and smoke when the trucks start up and pull out of the station. So we're looking to put in for an exhaust system that will solve that issue. Because one of the things that we are looking at through fire service right now is the results of cancer. And we're finding that the diesel soot and the exposure to the diesel soot causes those, some of those cancers. What we want to do is put, apply for this system so that we can remove that one hazard. And then also, again, we're going to try for the communications grant, try to replace our radios. Our radios are up there, about 30 years old, and we need to replace them. So we're looking at doing two projects with this grant. Last year, 8,500 departments applied for the AFG grant, 1,800 got approved. So it's a highly competitive grant, even with the letters from senators, congressmen, and pleading with FEMA. It is highly competitive. It is highly competitive. The AFG grant, again, this year, especially with the natural disasters that we had last year and this year, we're expected to have even more departments apply. So, but we would like to make this application. We're looking at the radio project being $389,037, and the project for the exhaust system, $81,025. And then that is a 10% match, which is $47,001, which we have in fire reserve that has been allotted to do this.
If approved or granted?
If the grant comes in, then yes. Again, the AFG is one of the most competitive grants that's out there, next to CBDG and, you know, those type, it's just highly competitive.
Any other questions for chief?
Just a question, chief. On the agenda memo, it says approve applications of the 2018 Assistance to Firefighters. Is that incorrect?
That's a typographical, sir.
Is it?
Typographical, I'm sorry.
It should be what, 2019 or 2020?
Should be 2019.
Okay.
Even though we're in 2020, they're a year behind.
I'll make a motion to approve the application of the 2019 Assistance to Firefighters Grant by the JCFD for the amount of $470,062.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item, consideration to apply for the 2020 Kansas Fire Assistance Grant.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, being a member of the Flint Hills Task Force for Wildland Urban Interface, we have the opportunity to apply with the State Forestry Commission for a 50/50 grant. And this is to purchase firefighting equipment that we would use in wildland situations. The grant is for $4,626. Our match is $2,313. We have it in our budget to do this. And this equipment will buy the hose that we use, which is a small one-inch hose, axes, brakes, those type of things that we use in wildland interface. So it's a way to help reduce the costs. I'm seeing that we respond with the task force. We are qualified for this grant. We were sent an invitation to apply, so I figured we'd give it a shot.
Any other questions?
I'd make a motion to approve the Junction City Fire Department to apply for the Kansas Fire Assistance Program for the amount of $4,626.
A second. We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Next item, Commissioner comments and committee reports. Commissioner Brown?
Nothing, Mayor.
Commissioner Larson?
Nothing. I'm, Animal Shelter Board meets next Wednesday.
Commissioner Butler?
The MAC breakfast we had this past week was well-attended. It was more of a large, I know it's a large crowd that I've been to. And we had a lot of people from the cab come out to listen to the Colonel. It was, they're about their rotation to Europe, and it was well-attended. Encourage anybody that's not going to come and see what's going on. It's a great relationship building with Fort Riley and what we do out there and what they do out there. And then the spouses tour is coming up March 17th. It is for military spouses through the MAC, and they are going to be taking them out to different organizations to learn about the city. Three of those organizations are going to provide either food or snacks. When they get there, some of the organizations, they get about two minutes, they'll drive up, they get on the bus, they can talk to them, and then they get off. So if you know any military out there, their spouses, want to get some information, contact Military Affairs Council, and they can hook them up with. They're going to take 40 of them out, 40 of the spouses out. So that's it.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
The EDC met last week. Mickey has quite a few projects in the hopper, going over a lot of stuff. Hopefully, we'll get some things to hit this year and move forward. There's some kind of misconception in the community that Gary Community Hospital is a city-owned or run entity. It is not, it's a county facility. So there's no funds from the city that will go to the hospital, nor funds from the school district that will go to the hospital. There's no mixing of monies that way. It's important that people contact their, their state representatives and senators regarding Medicaid expansion. It is absolutely vital for the survival of hospitals throughout our state that this happens. I know there's some wrangling going on in Topeka right now about trying to add something else on there to sabotage it. And we, we simply have to have it. Each one of us is paying taxes. Every year, they go to other states in our country to pay for their Medicaid coverage. That is a fact. So money is leaving our state and not coming back. And it's time that we reclaim that. If there is Medicaid expansion here in this state, it could cover 90% of those people with a 10% state match. That is absolutely vital. Otherwise, I have grave concerns about hospitals throughout our state. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Chamber meeting last week or the week before, relatively short agenda. We did have a presentation by the Hospital Board of Trustees and Dr. Craig expressing, you know, the importance of the hospital and that sort of thing. The chamber voted, and we made a proclamation stressing the importance and putting our support behind the hospital. There are a few things coming up this week. It's a pretty busy week. The Chamber Annual Dinner is Thursday. The Crime Stoppers Dinner and Awards are Friday. And the outrageous fundraiser for the hospital is Saturday.
And the Art Rages fundraiser for the hospital is Saturday. So, there is plenty to do this week, so... Mr. Dinkle.
You just cut my...
You're welcome.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
They thank you. Two things real quickly. Got contacted by Thomas Outdoor Advertising today. There is a billboard that sits on city property out by the water plant. It's been there a long time. I'm not a fan of it because I hate to see a billboard that we get $425 a year lease to have the billboard on there that a company makes money on, and often, they advertise businesses that are not located in the city. I was going to try to stop it last time, but another person that works here signed the lease and, because it just continued it. That's what they say, we'll just continue it. Unless there's a real want to, to keep a billboard there, I would personally like to see it just go away. Unless the commission's on, it's right by the water plant, Highway 57. The other ones that come through town, 57, they're not on city property, so we can't do anything about that. But I just think when you drive into town, you see the signs advertising something in another community or a political candidate, which as a city, we're not supposed to get involved with, but it's on city property, and people link that. So, unless you think we should renew it, you know, but personally, I don't see a need to renew it.
So, it's something that we can use to promote Rolling Meadows and kind of provide direction out for that?
Well, we could put our own sign on there. Well, we got to work with CADA, but maybe we can put our own sign on there, but it would have to be built by ourselves then. I mean, yeah, they would do it for us, but then they would pay us $400 for the land, and then they would charge us $400 bucks a month to put billboard up. Maybe we can get a billboard built for $2,000, you know, on our land.
Tied in with a contract with them or anything like that? Is there a contract with them?
We've had one, and it always kind of got renewed. The last one, it got renewed by another person, and, and, and we should have done it, but he just, he just renewed it, so right or wrong or different, but... Any heartburn if we don't renew it?
No.
Maybe we'll look at that. It's a good idea. And then the other item real quickly is, and we did have an offer for some land bank lots. Again, this is not land bank here, I realize that. For $1,000 a lot for lots, we're selling 5,000. I told Lance, I'm going to stick what the commission has stuck with the 5,000 because we do have that rebate program in place. So, that's all I have.
All right. Next slide.
So, the commission's aware, the litigation's running, the Homer's Pond property is set currently in April. It's more of a preliminary status, but we're, it's moving forward with that. I want to give kudos to Chief Lamb. Earlier this week, we started working on a big process on implementation of the whole pitbull change in policy and ordinance, or actually getting shelter with customer service, with police, with animal control, and my office all working together to make sure if that's the ordinance, then we are making sure we are smooth as possible in doing all the moving pieces of it. And then I'm in the review of the 911 agreements. That way, we can work with our other communities as well as reviewing some trash stuff, because that private hollow is, they're rattling sabers regarding that. So, I'm just making sure we have everything lined up for it, and that's all I have.
Ms. Milton? Ms. Miller?
I, Commissioner, as I'm sure you're aware, this week is our onsite audit for 2019. It has kind of, there has been some rather busy moments, if you can imagine. Six auditors pinging you one after another, asking you for information or documentation. So, I just wanted to give a shout out to our awesome staff. They've been a great help to making that all come together.
Thank you. Mr. Ibarra?
We received word from KDOT Transportation Alternatives, which is TA program, on a trail. We put in two applications, and one got denied, and we did one. The one that got denied was Blue Jayway Trail, but we will reapply again. And the one we did get was the Seventh Street Bike Boulevard, which would start here at Jefferson Street and go all the way to Eisenhower Connect that way. And as you know, we had those demonstration projects, and that'd be part of it. We'll have that island out here and curb extensions, that type of thing. And then we'll look at that Seventh and Jackson chicane that they had for the crossing on that. We'll take a look at that and see how that will go, so just to let you know that. And I think that grant is an 80/20, and it was $249,949. And I think Liberal County has some monies that they will put into this, to grant too, so...
There'd be no city dollars. They had the Blue Cross money.
Yep. So, we didn't get the trail extension from...
Spring Valley to...
Spring Valley to the high school?
But we will apply again, and we're looking at other options too, like the cost share program stuff, so...
Were we missing anything, or are they just...
When they came back this time, first time was, it was because of the lights. And then when it came back this time, it was like you need to show more connection to the trail, and you need to have more people support it from their surrounding right-of-way areas. But I think probably what happened was this bike boulevard. I think it's one of the first that's ever happened before, so KDOT's trying to hang their hat on that one. But I think that's why we got denied on that one. That's my thought.
And I think CADA would like to see a school built first. Yeah.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Thank you.
Mr. Luzier? Mr. Peterson?
Nothing, thank you.
Ms. Pula? Mr. Gurman?
Nothing, sir, thank you.
Mr. Youngers? Chief Lamb?
No, thank you.
Chief Johnson? We're all done?
Go to your room.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.